Good morning and welcome to the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, December 19th. I'm Todd Wilchin. I am the Chair of the County Board this year. On my left, fellow Commissioners Jennifer Brinkman, Deb Shore. On my right, Commissioners Roma Amundson and Vice Chair Commissioner Bill Avery. Joining us this morning from the County Attorney's Office is David Durbin. From the County Clerk's Office, we have the County Clerk Dan Nolte and Kelly Lundgren. From the County Board Office, we have our Chief Deputy Administrative Officer Anne Ames and our Chief Administrative Officer, Carrie Egan should be joining us momentarily. Please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, would you please start the agenda?
A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, a copy of all written material to be discussed in today's open meeting is available from the County Clerk staff at the front of the hearing room. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Agenda item one hundred minutes. Approve the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on Tuesday, December 12, 2017.
Move approval.
Second. Okay, we have motion and a second to approve the minutes from our last Board of Commissioners meeting held on Tuesday, December 12th. Any discussion or corrections? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number two is Claims. Approval of all claims processed through December 19, 2017.
Move approval.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve all the claims processed through today. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Next is a special presentation. This is Commissioners' Award of Excellence's November winner is Kelly Lundgren from the County Clerk's Office in the category of Productivity. And I have the nomination here that I'll read. Kelly Lundgren has been selected as the Commissioners' Award of Excellence's winner for November 2017. Kelly works as a County Record Specialist III and began working for the county on January 22, 2015. She was nominated by Carrie Forbes, Account Clerk in the category of Productivity. In her nomination, Ms. Forbes stated, "We had a fellow coworker that experienced an unexpected emergency injury that took her out of the office for an extended period of time. Kelly Lundgren has stepped up and gone above and beyond to do the work of that coworker in addition to all of her regular job duties. She has attended extra meetings, done extra agendas, done extra minutes, and without missing deadlines. She has been diligently working hard at her desk to make sure that the county is operating in business as usual doing the work of two people. I know that sometimes when you sit at your desk, do all that is required of you and then some, that can go unnoticed. Kelly makes what she does look easy. She is that good. But being that good doesn't come without a lot of patience, accuracy, and minute attention to detail. Kelly is at the top of her game. She is always at work giving it everything she has from start to finish. I know she's under a lot of pressure, but she just keeps going to make sure all the work is done no matter how impossible the deadline might seem. In addition to this, she is answering phones and doing backup general clerical work for other employees. She truly is a dedicated worker, and I want Kelly Lundgren to know that she has noticed for all she does for Lancaster County, and she is beyond appreciated. She is a valuable employee, and we're so lucky to have her. For these reasons, we're pleased to award Kelly Lundgren with the Commissioners' Award of Excellence for the month of November 2017."
And I think Cory and I will just echo what Carrie wrote. Kelly is invaluable to the office, and we really appreciate her dedication. She certainly has put in a lot of extra effort with the absence of somebody out due to medical reason, but beyond that, there is a lot of things Kelly does that really go unnoticed. They're behind the scenes. She's constantly following with the county attorney, purchasing and so forth to make sure everything happens, to get on the agenda, approved, and so forth. There are times when we've had SDLs that were in process. If Kelly hadn't fallen up, they wouldn't have got the stuff done in time. Events would have been canceled. There's things like that are going on. It's not real exciting, but it's important to the whole process. So we really appreciate Kelly's dedication to the Clerk's Office and to the people of Lancaster County.
If I could, we truly value all of our thousand employees, but there are two that the county works with more than anyone else, and that would be yourself and Anne. And so we appreciate all the behind-the-scenes work you do to make us look good, your attention to detail was mentioned, but mostly it's your pride and call of nature that gives us a sense of confidence and comfort. And I know that the fellow employees and also the public feel the same way. So it's a treasure to have you as part of our team, and our honor to present you with this award. So congratulations.
Let's see if I can't get it out of my pocket. Figured words written down were better than on the fly. It wasn't long after Kelly started in our office that I began to wonder if her last job was exactly the same as what she was doing for us now. She is just that good. She came to Lancaster County with a can-do attitude, and she is a great team player. Kelly takes the initiative to get the job done no matter what the job is. Her attention to detail, her dedication to follow-through, and ability to meet deadlines regardless of how much is in front of her is nothing shy of exceptional. Kelly works extremely hard on behalf of Lancaster County, and I felt that it was very important that she was recognized for her service. Kelly is an excellent fellow employee, and I am very fortunate that I work in the same office with her, and I am very, very grateful that the county has chosen to honor her with this award. So thank you very much.
And I just wanted, sorry, Kelly, I just wanted to add, you are the glue that holds us together. And I wanted you to know how much Dan and I appreciate everything you do, not only for our office, but for the county. And thank you, thank you, thank you, many times over.
Just want to tell Carrie, thank you so much. I really appreciate all the kind words you said. And Dan and Cory, thank you for having faith in me and, you know, just being behind me. Thank you to the Board for this award. It's truly an honor, and I'm very grateful. I have, my daughters both live in Omaha and work there, so I told them, and my parents are in Southwest Iowa, so I said, "We would just watch this this weekend." So they didn't come. I do have my work family with me here, and then I have probably the best partner in adventures and travel and life, and that's Olin Miller.
Yeah, thank you so much, Kelly, for everything you do. Appreciate it.
Next is number four, unfinished business. Four A is a resolution regarding the proposed sale of property located at 2201 South 11th Street in the city of Lincoln, Lancaster County, Nebraska, which includes declaring that the property no longer serves the county purpose determining fair market value and setting the date for sale of the property.
Cory BD, County Clerk's Office. This item has kind of been in a holding pattern since June, and we're kind of wanting to close out our 2017 record, so we're going to request that you formally withdraw it from consideration, knowing that if it comes back after the first year, a new resolution would need to be drafted anyway with the correct dates and so forth and so on. So that's the reason for this being on the agenda today.
Move we withdraw the resolution regarding the sale of property for unfinished business?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to withdraw the resolution regarding the proposed sale of Traver Hall. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Four B is roadside memorial signs policy.
After the discussion by the Board last week, we went back and made some revisions to the policy between the County Engineers' Office and the County Attorney's Office, and I believe we've addressed the concerns that were raised last week.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. So this item was tabled last week for some modifications to grammar and spelling, and the modification of a few details. I'm bringing it back before you again. I think the biggest detail is how the signs are paid for, and it's in the document that they'll be paid for out of the Keno Fund. This is really a program to respectfully memorialize the people who are in fatal crashes in our right of way, along with drawing to the attention of the traveling public, safety issues. And so it fits within some of my goals for county engineering, which are to improve safety on our roads.
Commissioner Brinkman?
Can you talk about how you determined why Keno would be the right place to pay for the signs?
So, Commissioner Brinkman, that was not my determination, and I think that you'll have to either refer to some of your peers or maybe Mr. Egan.
Sure.
Part of the concern raised by the County Attorney's Office was that we, that the public themselves could not pay for the signs, that we weren't allowed, didn't have that authority under statute. So, and I felt uncomfortable utilizing property tax dollars for this program and looked to the Keno Revenue Fund, that is, the proceeds that the county has from the sale of Keno gaming that is to be used for public betterment and public safety. And Carrie did some research with the Attorney General's Office, the Revenue Department, to clarify that that would be appropriate use of those funds, and they said yes, for public awareness and safety would certainly qualify.
Any other questions for Mrs. Dingman?
We'll move approval.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the roadside memorial signs policy. Any discussion?
Todd?
Commissioner Brinkman?
I'm going to vote no on this. I've talked to the county engineer about it weeks ago. I don't think it's the right policy. I think if we are concerned about safety and signage along the roads, we should have a comprehensive safety signage program that is not determined by a scattershot accident, which can be operator error in addition to road conditions or any other thing. I also don't think that this changes the fact that roadside memorials will continue to exist. I think this is a grieving process for some people, and if those roadside memorials end up being a safety issue, they should be picked up regardless of whether we have this alternative that we would offer to the family as an alternative. So because of those reasons, in addition to the fact that the original proposal was supposed to be revenue, that it was supposed to be paid for by these families, and now we're going to dip into Keno funds, which we also had a hearing about earlier this year that did not identify this program as a use for those funds, I'm going to vote no.
Any other discussion? Okay. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
No.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries four yes, one no. Next is number five, new business. Five A is a promotion of Todd Mulvar from Attorney One to Attorney Two with an annual salary of eighty-four thousand seventy-five dollars and sixty-eight cents effective August 3, 2017.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to promote Todd Mulvar from Attorney One to Attorney Two. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. B is reappointment of Shar Siek, an appointment of Chris Skow and Trudy Pedley for three-year terms commencing in January 1, 2018, and ending in December 31, 2020, and appointment of Deana Noe for a two-year term to fill a vacated position commenced in January 1, 2018, and ending in December 31, 2019, to Lancaster County Extension Board.
Good morning. Karen Wobig with the Lancaster County Extension Office, and I am pleased today to have with me some members of our Extension Board, or soon-to-be members, hopefully, of our Extension Board. So I will let each of them say a little bit about themselves, but just so you know the process, we have three-year terms on our board typically, and Shar Siek, the first name on the agenda, is actually renewing her for the second term. So she's unable to be with us today, so she's not here, but she has graciously said she would serve another three-year term. And then we had two members on our board that had termed out, so to speak. They had both served the two terms, and so replacing those are Chris Skow and Trudy Pedley. And then we had one member that was not able to complete his first three-year term due to a job change. And so Deana Noe is graciously going to fulfill that term for two years. So with that, we are here to seek your approval and appointment of these folks, and I'll let each of them maybe speak a little bit about what they do, and you can ask them questions. So Trudy, should you start?
A lot of familiar faces up there. As you probably all know, that I was on the Lancaster County Ag Society for 12 years, and decided I was ready to pursue different ways in which to serve the community. And so I was approached to start in on the Extension Board, and I think my familiar, how I'm familiar with the 4-H program will be beneficial. However, I'm learning that there is so much more to extension than just the 4-H aspect, and I'm excited to get involved in that part. I'm a farm girl and lived in the city for over 40 years, but still my heart is with agriculture. And I'm retired, otherwise, so I do have some time.
You're not running any other county fairs that we know of?
No.
Deana?
I'm Deana Noe. I work at the University of Nebraska Federal Credit Union, and I had the opportunity to get involved with Clover College this year, and that's how I met Karen and have been asked to work on the Board. I have 20, about 25 years of financial services experience, and of those years, I have probably about 15 in marketing. And she thought that maybe a marketer would be a good addition to the Extension Board, so that's why I'm here today. Thanks.
What was your expertise at Clover College? Was it...
Financial wellness.
Chris?
Good morning. I'm Chris Skow. I'm currently the managing broker and operations manager of a company called United Farm and Ranch Management here in Lincoln. I've been in that field for about 30 years. I live in southern Lancaster County on an acreage. Have two daughters that have been through the 4-H program, have both aged out now. Had a brief stint with the Extension Board a number of years back when I was President of the 4-H Council. I served a three-year term and then an additional year as President on that while my daughters were participating. So have some familiarity and see some familiar faces still there at the Extension Office, so looking forward to serving on the Board. Thank you.
And oddly enough, they all know each other, which from past things, that was not planned, but a nice surprise. So we seek your approval for our nominations.
I move that we approve the nominations of Shar Siek, of Chris Skow, Trudy Pedley.
And Deana Noe.
And Deana. Oh, yeah, and Deana Noe, I'm sorry.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to reappoint Shar Siek and appoint Chris Skow, Trudy Pedley, and Deana Noe. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you all so much for your service. Very much appreciate it.
Thank you.
C is an agreement physicians laboratory services for forensic pathology services as a coroner's physician. The services shall be provided for the county through the County Attorney's Office. The services shall include forensic autopsies, coordination to provide a morgue facility and staff, coroner's call, testimony, additional tests, and other services. The term of the agreement is five years from the date of execution. The county shall pay for services as provided in Attachment A.
Good morning. My name is Pat Condon. I'm the Chief Deputy of Lancaster County Attorney's Office here, just asking the Board to approve this agenda item. The Physicians Laboratory does provide an invaluable service for the county. They have two forensic pathologists that we rely heavily on in our, in the prosecution end of things. Dr. Bowen and some of the others that are not board certified also help out in the other aspects of, you know, baby deaths, things of that, where we have to have an autopsy done. The services not only just provide it with the autopsy, but they're very good at, you know, allowing us to call them up, talk to them, discuss the cases with them, and have a back and forth with them, and meet with the attorneys when it comes to time for testimony and trials and depositions, things of that nature. They're very attentive to our needs, and I would request that you do approve this item.
Any questions for Mr. Condon?
I have a question.
If you have a question, I guess if you'd like to speak to the item, please come forward.
Let's just call me Terry Ray, okay? I have the question I have. One time I was here, and you guys said that the autopsies were done in Omaha. So if you vote this with this man, or whatever you guys are talking about, does that mean the autopsies, autopsy, how do you say that word? Autopsies are done here in Lincoln? Are they still done in Omaha?
No, the contract provides with the services being provided through the morgue in Omaha.
Okay, so there's no morgue in Lincoln at all?
Not run by the county or the city.
The reason I ask is Davy Del Green, when he was dead 66 in Vine, May 9, 2015. I'm looking for the morgue, and I didn't know it was in Omaha.
Any other discussion?
Move approval of the agreement.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the agreement with physicians laboratory services. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Five D is an agreement and acceptance of proposal with the Lincoln League of Women Voters to assist with voter registration sites in Lancaster County. The county shall pay $4,000 for the services provided. Term of agreement is September 1, 2017 through August 31, 2019.
Good morning. Dave Shively, Lancaster County Election Commissioner. This is just our annual agreement with the League to assist us with voter registration sites, which they do it. Grocery stores, libraries, schools, they help us out a lot during, especially during busy election cycles. So it's a two-year agreement. We used to do it annually, and a few years ago, we went to a two-year agreement, just made things a little easier on our end.
Any questions for Mr. Shively?
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the agreement with the League of Women Voters. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. E is approval of mid-year budget memo.
Good morning. Dennis Meyer, County Budget and Fiscal Director. Just when you think budget stuff is kind of not happening. Well, we're about, you know, we're about halfway through our current budget, so this memo that we kick out to the county departments is just kind of setting us up for our mid-year budget review that will take place February 1. So this letter will just kind of reach out to the department saying, "Okay, let me know how the first six months have gone," and then we also look for, you know, if you feel that you're going to have any kind of needs in, you know, employees, technology, capital outlay items over the next two years, we'll kind of look at those items too, and it'll just kind of become discussion at our mid-year budget retreat.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Meyer?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the mid-year budget memo. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. F is Nebraska Department of Transportation Highway Safety Office preliminary breath test mini grant contract and award to provide funding of $1,770 to the Lancaster County Sheriff's Office to purchase six preliminary breath testers. There is no cost to the county.
Move approval of the preliminary breath tester mini grant contract and award.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the contract and award with the Nebraska Department of Transportation Highway Safety Office. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. G is a resolution in a matter of setting salaries for elected county officials for the 2019-2022 term.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to set the salaries for the elected officials of Lancaster County. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Five H is a resolution in a matter of annual salary increases for appointed directors, assistant directors, bailiffs, and child support referee. All salary increases are effective December 21, 2017.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second regarding the annual salary increases for appointed directors, assistant directors, bailiffs, and child support referees. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. I is a resolution in a matter of designating banks as depositories for Lancaster County for 2018.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second with regard to designating banks as depositories for the county. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. J is a resolution in a matter of authorizing a county clerk to issue payments while the county board is adjourned.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We have a motion and a second authorizing the county clerk to issue payments while the county board is adjourned. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Wilton.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. K is a resolution authorizing action with respect to traffic control devices in Lancaster County.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. So sometimes we're forced to change our signs based on what other people do. And in this case, in the village of Malcolm, they have reduced the speed through town right at the curve by the Methodist Church to twenty-five miles an hour. And so that means that we're required to re-sign in our jurisdiction notice that the speed is dropping. So we have to add signs anytime there's a speed limit change of more than twenty miles an hour. So this is really responding to their action from inside their village.
Commissioner Shore.
Just because I'm familiar with that roadway. It was previously thirty-five, so you're going to go from fifty-five down to twenty-five just on that curve, and then back to fifty-five as soon as you leave.
So what's happened, what's, yeah, what's happened in this area is a developer has put a number of driveways onto the major arterial, and the village of Malcolm annexed that. We did recommend no driveways in this area because of the curve and because of the speed of the road. Malcolm did not take our recommendation and is now asking, or is now reduce the speed within their village limits for safety reasons. And so with the school just to the north of there, we're going to go ahead and reduce the speed limit on either side going into Malcolm in order, not to create an illegal speed trap, basically.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Move approval. Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second authorizing traffic control devices in Malcolm. Any discussion? Or near Malcolm, apologize. Please call the roll.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Wilton.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Five L is a recommendation from the purchasing department and a county engineer to award a purchase order to Husker Auto Group using the state of Nebraska contract number one four five eight four OC for a two thousand eighteen Chevrolet, Chevrolet, thirty-five-hundred HD work truck in a total amount of thirty-eight thousand one hundred ninety-seven dollars.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. This is a truck that we had in the budget last year. It is a mechanic's truck, so as, I don't know if all of you are aware, but the mechanics basically use the truck as their toolbox, and then oftentimes, we are required to go out and do the mechanic work wherever the equipment broke down, which isn't always the most convenient place. But we're prepared to do that in order to keep our equipment running for the public.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to purchase a work truck for county engineering. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Wilton.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. M is an amendment to county contract C dash seventeen dash four fifty-seven with Gana Trucking and Excavating for Erosion Control. At three locations in Lancaster County, the amendment adds high-purosity silt fencing at one location for an increase of one hundred ninety-two dollars and fifty cents.
High-purosity silt fence is kind of an interesting thing, and we put it in drainage ditches because it actually allows places where there is flow for the flow to pass through while dropping the sediment, whereas more dense silt fence can become overwhelmed and ineffective in storm events. So we have had to modify some of the grading slightly with a few of these erosion control projects on Rock Creek and the D eighty-eight bridge, and so this is a change order for that, and I apologize for bothering you for a hundred and ninety-two dollars and fifty cents, but it's better if we do these change orders as we go along.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to amend the contract with Gana Trucking and Excavating. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Wilton.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. N is a second amendment to county contract C dash seventeen dash four sixty-three with TCW Construction, Inc., for replacement of structures H one twenty-eight, H one thirty, and J one forty-three. The amendment extends the completion dates for work on structures H one twenty-eight and J one forty-three from December eighteenth, two thousand seventeen, to June first, two thousand eighteen.
As you're aware, Bridge H one twenty-eight and, well, H one twenty-eight, H one thirty, and J one forty-three, all on one hundred and forty-H Street. We had a really wet year, as dry as it's been the last six months, which has truly been a gift. So we basically, the month of September and October, we were just kind of mud farmers. And then J one forty-three, it took us a long time to get that piece of ride away. We've only had it for about two weeks. We are extraordinarily lucky. On November fifteenth, when I usually like to finish up my construction site projects, I still had eight open projects. We're down to one on one hundred and forty-eighth, and I hope that we can open that one tomorrow afternoon, but I'm not brave enough to take out the last bridge before it either freezes or snows a bunch. And so we need to adjust TCW's contract to account for finishing that first thing in the spring.
We can have a discussion. I'm going to ask a question. So the J one forty-three is the last one, and I know it's been extended to June first. Can you give a timeframe when you think the construction would take place?
Well, construction first thing in the spring can unfortunately be a little iffy. And people don't realize that we typically get one more inch. It's not April showers, it's May showers. We typically get about an inch more of rain in May than in April, about four inches in April, five inches in May. So we end up sometimes with slowed construction there too, so that's why I went with the June first date. TCW, what we're doing is thirty construction days, and so that means if it's a rain day or if it's too money to do work, that doesn't count as a workday. But what our spec says is thirty days, you get thirty workdays from when you close the road.
I mean, the reason I was asking is that one of the things that comes up through the number of, I guess, discussions we've had with constituents is the timing because of the detour taking place during the school year. So I didn't know if it was possible to maybe, since we are already delaying the project, if it was an option to delay it even for a few more weeks to allow. I mean, I know it's Nebraska, and sometimes we have wet springs in summer, but...
Because of the nature of this bridge, and unfortunately, this last bridge is the worst, we have already closed it under emergency situations twice. We have continued to fill voids behind the abutments in order to stabilize it. I would really like to replace it as soon as possible. I have concerns that that sets a precedence, and sadly, we have several other bridges to construct in this area, and so this, of course, is one of last year's structures. If possible, we could look into that. That would mean that I would have to change this change order because there are not thirty days between June first and when school lets out in this case. So I could look into that.
Anyone else? Please come forward.
This time I'll sign. I took the pencil last time, so you couldn't. I brought you guys pens, because your pens are junk, they don't work. Terry Pope Gonzalez, founder of the Neighborhood Association. Will you guys allow TCW Construction to be fifty feet from my home? It's a reason I'm poisoned. They do shoddy work. They do junk work. They can't even keep employees. So, yeah, I guess it's personal, right? You let them come fifty feet from our home eighteen years ago, and this is what you people said. It's going to be temporary. But I guess people in Nebraska don't know what temporary means, do they? Because temporary shouldn't still be eighteen years. And I guess I didn't die. So all you people lost all your money, didn't you? Because I guess I didn't die. Now, TCW Construction is junk. I'm the one who called in the EPA, not the little piddly Nebraska stuff, the big boys. So you can go over and see, TCW Construction Maintenance Shop has been shut down, and Husker Ready Mix Concrete, which is also TCW Construction, is getting ready to be shut down. So when you make sure you do your contract, make sure you start putting how many times that they get fined, because other companies get fined, so why don't they? And you know when they come into? Oh, we Mexican. My last name's Gonzalez. I never was a Teresa. But you thought I was. My daddy named me Terry Ray, and we're farmers. That's why my shit kickers I have on, and I realize you have delicate ears, but if Pam can tell you what shit kickers are, they are steel-toed boots.
Watch the language, Ms. Gonzalez.
Hey, that's what they're called. And see mine? Mine are used. See this? They're used. So, yeah, no, on a construction site, that's a word. Now, we're not in church. Now, you all seem to think we are, but we're not. Now, TCW Construction is a junk company, and by the time I'm done, not only am I going to take everything they have, I'm going to take everything you have, because guess what? You guys all knew what they were doing, and you let it happen. And you know what it's called in law? It's called reckless endangerment. That's all I got to say about this one. But before we're done, I'm going to help you with Andy Stebbin. I'm going to help you, because, see, when you're on a union job site, if you see something, you say something. You don't look the other way, and you don't pretend it's not happening. No, TCW didn't just abuse me, every single person in that neighborhood, seven blocks long, two blocks wide, but not one of you, right? Because I don't see any of you complaining, but I guess I didn't die.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Entertained a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the second amendment with the contract with TCW Construction. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Wilton.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Five O is designation of official Lancaster County newspapers for two thousand eighteen publication of transportation projects as follows. Lincoln Journal Star, The Voice from Hickman, and the News of Waverly.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to designate the official Lancaster County newspapers for two thousand eighteen. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Wilton.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. P is an amendment to county contract C dash fourteen dash eight seventy-four with Palladine LLC for roof replacement for the Waverly buildings in Salt Dome. The estimated cost for the services will be increased seven thousand four hundred and thirty-three dollars for a revised contract total amount of thirty thousand one hundred and seventy-eight dollars.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay. We are going to, we have a motion and a second to amend the county contract with Palladine LLC. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Wilton.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Q is an interlocal agreement with Seward County for the safekeeping, care, and sustenance of pre-adjudicated juveniles at the Youth Services Center. Lancaster County will be reimbursed at the rate of two hundred and seventy-six dollars per juvenile per day.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the interlocal agreement with Seward County. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Wilton.
No.
Motion carries four yes, one no. Five R is an agreement with continuum employee assistance, providing an employee assistance program for county employees. Term of the agreement is January first, two thousand eighteen, through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty. The county will pay continuum twenty thousand four hundred and ninety-nine dollars per contract year.
Doug McDaniel, Human Resources, is a three-year contract with Continuum EAP. They're an integral part of our management structure, also serves as our substance abuse professional for our DOT drug testing. The contract of twenty thousand four hundred and ninety-nine dollars is an increase of three hundred and three dollars over the last three years for each year.
Any questions for Mrs. McDaniel?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the agreement with continuum employee assistance. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Wilton.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. S is a master services agreement with Aetna for claims administrative services for the Lancaster County self-funded group healthcare program, effective January first, two thousand eighteen.
Doug McDaniel, Human Resources, this is the master service agreement for Aetna for our self-funded health insurance. Coverage begins January one. It's been through rigorous review through county attorney and also the chief deputy administrative officer in my office as well.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. McDaniel?
Move approval. Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to amend the master services agreement with Aetna. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Wilton. Shore?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Five T is an amendment to the master services agreement with the Aetna for claims administrative services for the Lancaster County self-funded group healthcare program, effective January first, two thousand eighteen, to include Teladoc program as part of the services.
This is an amendment to the master service agreement that we just approved. It sets up Teladoc, pardon me, which is a service that we've added to our profile for telephonic diagnostic work with healthcare professionals. It's a later amendment because there was a pricing change in our favor.
Move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second to amend the master services agreement with Aetna. Any discussion? I just want to take the opportunity to thank Human Resources and their staff, the county attorney's office, and the county board office for all their work on this. I know that anytime you change insurance providers for such a large organization, and not only the county, but at the same time the city, I'm, like I said, very, we appreciate it very much. So, thank you.
And we had great support from county attorney and the chief deputy administrative officer as well, so, thanks. Thank you. Please call a roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. U is an amendment to county contract C-dash thirteen dash five fifty with Rochester Armored Car for the annual requirements of armored car services. The amendment extends the contract for one month from January first, two thousand eighteen, through January thirty-first, two thousand eighteen. Estimated cost of county is not to exceed one thousand five hundred dollars.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend county contract with Rochester Armored Car. Any discussion? Please call a roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Five V is an amendment, or amendments to the following contracts for the annual supply of traffic channelizing and barricade devices. The amendments renew the contracts from January first, from January fifth, two thousand eighteen, through January fourth, two thousand nineteen. The cost to county is not to exceed a combined total of twelve thousand dollars, and this is county contract C-dash sixteen dash six with All Road Barricades, Inc., and county contract C-dash sixteen dash seven with Traffic's Devices, Inc.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend two contracts involving the annual supply of traffic channelizing and barricade devices. Any discussion? Please call a roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. W is an amendment to county contract C-dash thirteen dash six oh two with Uribe Refuse Services for the annual requirements of waste and recyclable collection services. The amendment renews the contract for a term beginning January first, two thousand eighteen, and December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. The cost to county is not to exceed one hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend the contract with Uribe Refuse Services. Please call a roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. X are documents between Lancaster County and PJC Farms Limited Partnership related to the transfer of real property near Highway seventy-seven Yankee Hill Road in Lancaster County. This is an agreement and a special warranty deed from Lancaster County to PJC Farms Limited Partnership.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the documents with the PJC Farms Limited Partnership regarding the transfer of real property, the agreement and the special warranty deed. Any discussion? Please call a roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Y is a contract with Joseph Camerata, M.D., for specialized care of general assistance clients. Providers will reimburse at the Medicaid rate.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the contract with Dr. Joseph Camerata. Any discussion? Call a roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Next is number six, consent items. Utility permit number fifteen forty-eight, allowing allo communications to install approximately seven point five miles of new underground fiber optic cable at various locations from South Fifty-Sixth Street and Yankee Hill Road to South Seventyth Street and Rokeby Road. There is no cost to county. Rightaway contracts with the following. Michael and Letty Evans, Breagan Road and First Street, Cheney, in amount of eight thousand two hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Dean Jeffrey, South Fifty-Sixth Street and Southdale Road, in amount of five hundred and five dollars. Thomas and Lori Bellenhousen, South Fifty-Sixth Street and Southdale Road, in amount of nine hundred and fifty-five dollars. Stevens Creek K, LLC, and Two K Holdings LLC North, one hundred and forty-eighth Street and Holdridge Street, in amount of two thousand nine hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Receiving place on file, the county sheriff's report for November two thousand seventeen. Letter from Pioneer Overhead Door terminating for convenience unit price contract number sixteen two eighty-nine for overhead door repair and replacement services affected December thirteenth, two thousand seventeen. Setting public hearings for Tuesday, January ninth, two thousand eighteen, at nine AM in room one twelve of the county city building for the following. County tax amendment number seventeen zero one four amending section seven dash two and section eight oh five of Lancaster County subdivision regulations and section fourteen dash thirteen for the Lancaster County zoning regulations for CAD standards and tax amendment number seventeen zero one eight amending article eighteen of the Lancaster County zoning resolution relating to special height and use near airports. Appeal of planning commissioners conditional approval of special permit number seventeen oh four three to allow soil mining and excavating on property generally located at Southwest one hundred and twelfth street and West Van Dorn.
Move approval of the consent items. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent items. Any discussion? Please call a roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number seven is public comment. Those wishing to speak to items relating on county business not on the agenda may do so at this time.
Can I need somebody to have that thing work? Can somebody help me?
Yeah, you just place the piece of paper up there, and then we'll turn it on back here.
You going? Hit it. Here's my filter. Like the mayor said, I had to have. There you go. All right. See this right here? Is it on? It's not on.
Just come on.
How do you make it go?
It's technology. It'll go.
Okay, now can you see? SSU one three two, SSU one three zero. Mean anything to you? Come on, guys. It's a test. It's dead people paying your wheel tax. SSU one three zero, that man's been dead since two thousand and nine. How come he's still paying your wheel tax? Is that Andy Stebbins in it? What did the paper say? Inattentive, 'cause I can't talk, right? Inattentive?
The county itself doesn't collect wheel tax.
Listen, listen, listen. I know. I'm telling you, 'cause he dogged you on the radio. That's what, you know what he said? He said you weren't diplomatic. He was. But at least you're on top of things, okay? All right, now let's do this, all right? Here's the three pens I promised you, 'cause your stuff is junk. The legislature, when you go to talk to them, it costs you four dollars and ninety-five cents. No, don't leave that up. Come on, 'cause people need to know. Check it out. It's called Freedom of Information Act. It's not that hard to do. The eighty-ninth Congress enacted it, all right? The eighty-ninth Congress. Do you know when that was? July fourth, nineteen sixty-six, all right? Now, we're gonna get something straight. When I came up here, when whoever, Smoyer, do you remember with Smoyer? Okay? This is how it works. Anybody and everybody who wants to pay taxes that has anything to do with this county can come up here and talk at any given time. Now, me, I am sick. I puked my guts out to get here, okay? Because I don't like what Andy Stebbins said about you. I don't seem to think that you're a piece of shit. I told, you said I couldn't say the word shit, so I'm not. I'm not, I'm not. But Matt Hatson, nobody paid me to come when Smoyer was here. Nobody, all right? Now, I don't, I don't internet, and if you've got something to say, you come talk to me. I don't like... Oh, and here, I brought this so you guys could see. How many people do you know keep who they vote for? I didn't get to vote for any of you. Neither did my husband. Are they open? No. I was at the emergency room. So, I guess I was supposed to be dead. You know, poisoned by TCW Construction, Husker Ready Mix Concrete. I guess somebody forgot to tell me. Oh, no, they gave me twenty-four hours. You know what I said? Let me out of here. I got people to see. I got debts to collect. See, I'm not from here. I don't know. I'm just supposed to be a sheep. I guess where I come from, we're all goats. Where I come from, you know what a goat is? It's a GTO with a four fifty-four on the floor. Now, there's no way that dead people should be paying wheel tax. So, maybe Andy Stebbins needs to resign. That's why I'm impressed with you. Not much in this town impresses me. This is from my bank. They said, yes, take them down to you guys. I don't feel well. So, Terry, if I pass out, make sure you get nine-one-one here, 'cause I don't know you people, and I know I can't trust city council. It's like going to anaphylactic shock. But hey, thank you, 'cause I'm sure you've all known about it. Because I, how many times have I done an appeal? Do a Freedom of Information Act. Guess what you'll find out? How many times have I been in front of the equalization board? How many times have I been in front of you people? How many? Thank God, please don't move, because then I don't know who you are. Roma, I thank you for your service at National Guard. It's hard to be a first responder. Were you a senator?
Yes.
Okay, because I must have talked to you, because I've got your card at home. Do you want to know how anal my people are? We keep track of everything. You, and I don't know how to say your last name, and honey, I can't see it, but I know you're Todd, and your mama is wonderful. You, I know you were on the board when Ray Stevens was. He's now on NRD. You know he came over to check TCW? Do you know what he said? Wow, it's awful clean. Guess the man's never been on a work job site, has he? I don't know your name besides Brinkman. And I guess if I'd have bought all of Woody Brinkman's land way back when, this wouldn't be happening. I don't know what you are. I just know you're bald. So, on my thing here, I just put bald man. Do you mind telling me who you are?
Dave Durbin.
Oh, I can hear you.
Dave Durbin.
And what do you do?
I'm a county attorney.
Oh, okay. I thought the county attorney was somebody named Joe.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for your time, and this is not meant for you. The F-word on there. It's meant for the mayor. God bless you guys. Oh, Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Do you mind if I wait and listen to you? Please talk loud, because I can't hear. I'm not shouting at you. I can't hear.
Chair Wilchun, members of the county board. For the record, Gary Aldridge, A-L-D-R-I-D-G-E, Lincoln, Nebraska. I got here before the meeting started, but I stopped and talked with Theresa Meyer on an event that happened at the city council meeting last night that involved the NRD and the city. So, I walked in at about agenda item A or B, so bear with me. I'm gonna back up to three special presentation. A Commissioner's Award of Excellence, Kelly Lundgren. At a girl, you do good. And if you had a nameplate, she'd know who you were.
Thanks, Gary.
Anyone else in the audience wishing to be included, if not on the agenda? Okay. Excuse me, Mr. Clerk, would you please continue with the announcements?
The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will be in recess from December twentieth, two thousand seventeen, through January third of, through January third, two thousand eighteen. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting on Thursday, January fourth, two thousand eighteen, at eight-thirty AM in the Bill Luxford Studio of the county city building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will attend legislative breakfast on Monday, January eighth, two thousand eighteen, at eight AM in room one, in room eleven-twenty-six of the state Capitol. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold their next regular meeting on Tuesday, January ninth, two thousand eighteen, at nine AM in room one-twelve of the county city building, with the Board of Equalization immediately following. County Commissioners can be reached at four oh two, four four one, seven four four seven, or commission@lancaster NE dot gov. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live on Link TV City. For the rebroadcast schedule, visit Lincoln dot NE dot gov. Meetings are also streamed live on Link TV and can be viewed on YouTube.
Move, will you adjourn?
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Please call a roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
And that concludes the county board meeting. Everyone have a safe and happy holidays. See you next year.
And do you?